Good evening and welcome to the, what is this, March 28th? Already goodness. The March 28th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Fulton, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. McWilkin, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we have an approved agenda. Now, if you'll please remove your hats, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, you may be seated. Now, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is school recognitions. Can we have Ms. Baker, please join us at the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, Dr. Seichel for being here this evening. Thank you, community members, I know it's freezing cold for a March evening, so I really appreciate you guys bundling up and joining us this evening. Before we get rolling, I just would like to thank everybody who helped make this evening possible. My custodial crew worked really hard to make sure that our auditorium space and our library space and any of the spaces that you may see were ready for company. I don't know how it works at your house, but when I'm cleaning a lot, my kids say, "Who's coming over?" So, thank you all for coming over tonight. I also would like to thank our maintenance department, we had an emergency podium repair today that had to happen and I know Kevin was here earlier today to help set up sound and everything. So, appreciate everybody's teamwork to make this evening possible. I would also like to thank my two assistant principals that you will meet in just a moment, Mrs. Laura Gunther and Mr. Brad Saylor. They are instrumental in everything we do here and I could not do this job without them. So, thank you both very much for everything. And I'm going to turn the mic over to them so that they can recognize a couple of our students this evening. Waiting to see if we advance our slide. I advance the slide.
Oh, too far.
Oh, gosh. Phew, that was rough. I'm here to present one of our Character Accounts recipients awards, so can I have Anna Florrie come join me up front, please? So, Anna was selected by our eighth grade teachers and this is a little statement we'd like to read about Anna. Anna holds herself to a high standard personally and academically. She consistently demonstrates courtesy and respect while working with her classmates and teachers. When working collaboratively with peers, Anna is a quiet leader who helps keep her group organized and moving towards their goal. She offers feedback in a respectful manner which is well received by her peers. Her pleasant demeanor contributes to a positive classroom environment for all. Anna always has a smile to share. Anna participated in cross-country and is an excellent teammate. Anna's commitment to her education, care for others, and bright personality make her this year's recipient of the Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Accounts Award. Congratulations, Anna.
Thank you.
But wait, there's more. Anna, on behalf of the school board, I have a couple of things for you.
Thank you.
First, we have a pen for you to place near your heart because this award is very close to our hearts and we want it to be close to your heart as well. And then, we have a certificate. Did you bring people with you tonight?
My family.
Are you comfortable speaking and telling us who your family is? Or, I can do it. Parents Lisa and Kevin Florrie, can you all please stand? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, we understand that character begins at home and thank you for all the work you've done to bring us here tonight. And we have a certificate for your wall so you can hang it proud and be very proud of Anna. And then, also, because you've been so sweet, we have a sweetness award for you. This is a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. So, thank you. Do we want a picture? I'll let you. But, let's please give Anna another round of applause.
Thank you, thank you.
Could I have Ryland Wade, please? All right, Ryland is also a recipient of the Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Accounts Award. His eighth grade teachers nominated him and this is a blurb that they had to say about you, Ryland. They said Ryland is a model student who continually strives for success. He is a natural leader in the classroom, on the athletic field, and in the school musical. He takes responsibility for his own work and actions and offers constructive and supportive feedback to his peers. Ryland is respectful, kind, responsible, and embodies the four R values that MontaVideo was built on. He has found the perfect balance between having fun and doing his work, joking around and being serious. Ryland is naturally curious and helpful in class and always ready to share his ideas with others. Ryland's dedication to learning and his kind spirit make him this year's recipient of the Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Accounts Award. Good job, Ryland.
And Ryland, we have the same items for you as well. Now, are you comfortable telling us your people or do you want me to? Okay.
My mom is Natalie Wade and my dad is John Wade.
Can you guys please stand? Thank you guys for what you've done, like I said, this definitely begins at home. And thank you, Ryland and Anna, for everything you do for this school. Especially in these times, it's so wonderful to have great leaders and kids that other kids can look up to. So, thank you for being a role model for your school. Let's give Ryland and Anna another round of applause.
It is my honor this evening to recognize a pair of volunteers who have shown their dedication to MontaVideo in some very unique ways over the last three years. So, Mr. and Mrs. Wolf, would you please join me? Sorry, I'm going to embarrass you just like we do the kids. This is Sarah and Earl Wolf and they have been avid supporters of our Ag program for the last three years that their daughter Katie has been with us and she's very active in our Ag program. I have consulted with both Mrs. Horn, who's our current Ag teacher, as well as Ms. Warrens, who's our Ag teacher the first two years of Katie's time here. And they both had wonderful things to share about, excuse me, I'm dropping things, about the Wolves. If you know anything about how Ag operates here in Rockingham County, you know that there are lots of co-curricular activities, it's not simply going to class. So, the Wolves have been very helpful, hands-on helpful in many ways, including every fundraiser that we've ever had. And again, the Ag department has lots of fundraisers from strawberry sales to fruit to plant sales and they have been very helpful in all of those. They have also been hands-on with all the events at the county fair. Ms. Warren said they give generously of their time and resources, which I understand is a truck that you often lug students and other things to and from. And because of this, many students who maybe were not able to be involved in Ag have now been involved in our Ag program, so we really thank you for that. Most recently, the Wolves shared their calf with us, this is Aubrey. We had a kiss the cow contest recently to raise money for the John Painter and J.J. Jefferson Memorial Student Support Fund. So, our students voted for teachers in little jars. We kind of started with some pennies, we progressed to quarters and by the end, people were given some dollar bill donations. But together, collectively, we raised $500 for Bridgewater, so we are super thankful for that and we would not have been able to do that without Aubrey. So, thank you guys for sharing your calf with us, it was quite an experience to have calf join us in the shop. And we were able to livestream it across the school so that all of our students could watch this unique fundraiser, so we really appreciate it. So, thank you again for everything you have done for our Ag program and our students here at MontaVideo.
Thank you very much. As an FFA parent, I really do understand the commitment you guys have made. In fact, I recently heard that FFA actually stands for Fathers Farm Alone and as an Ag parent, we can say that is true, isn't it? So, thank you not only for what you've done here, but for what you've done keeping everything running so your kids can participate. We also have a certificate to hang on your wall because we're so very proud of you all, so I'll give you the certificate. And then, we have a Klein's Dairy Bar gift card and I'll give that to you. And again, thank you all for all of your hard work. Let's give them another round of applause.
Our school presentation this evening is going to be a short video clip that highlights our advisory program. So, student advisory is one of the practices that is a true middle school practice that we know benefits students. So, we purchased curriculum this year that we've been adapting to fit the needs of our students. And we've carved out about 25 minutes daily in our schedule for advisory. About three days a week, we do lessons and those lessons are built on character and community type activities. And then, the other couple of days of the week, we reserve for any school business we need to take care of or just even some days for students just to do their homework and catch up. I know some students have had some significant absences and things like that. So, this has been a really instrumental part of our day in really helping us build relationships with students and focus on some of their emotional health needs that we know they need. The last couple of years, as we all know, have not been normal, so this has been a great addition to our day that we believe is really helping our students. So, we're going to share a quick video and I again thank Ms. Laura Gunther and Mr. Brad Saylor for putting together this video while I was on vacation over spring break. So, cheers to them, thank you.
What? So, yes, eating can be, is that a healthy way to deal with it?
It can be healthy.
Yeah, it works before and afterwards.
Okay. Sometimes, listen, sometimes we just need like a comfort food. Like, it just is like, okay, it's a matter of putting a couple of calories or to, or did you like...
Has there been any special lesson that you remember?
The one where sympathy versus empathy.
What can you tell me about sympathy versus empathy?
I don't remember which one, but one of them is putting yourself in another position and the other one's comparing, like, what happened to you and them?
Has that been a helpful life skill?
Yeah.
Hi, Esther, can you tell me something that you have enjoyed about advisory this year?
The lessons and probably my teacher.
Tell me a little bit more about the lessons, what kind of things do you do in advisory?
I like when we talk about all of the things on how to be kind to one another and how to like keep friends and not be rude.
Nice. Has there been a particular activity that has stood out to you?
No, I liked them all.
Anything else you want to share?
No.
All right, thank you. Brilliant, tell me a little bit about what you like about advisory this year.
I like how we get to connect with people and we get to interact and do a lot of fun things. And our teacher is really nice and fun and I love just, he was at school and interact. We play games sometimes and then we have workdays and he has to help us do our work and find out what we need to work on, so it's really fun.
What's one topic you guys have talked about this year that has helped you grow?
I think when we talked about trust. Because you need to know how to trust people and know how to not break other people's trust in order to have a good, strong friendship.
Excellent, thank you.
What has been your favorite advisory lesson so far this year?
I like the one we did, like, this week with stress. Yeah. Yeah, that's something I think about the last time we do a lot, especially me. Yeah, that's something I've been broke the last time you do a lot, especially me.
So advisory has been, more than anything, I think, a really great way to build relationships and practice team building in my class this year. My advisory students will often say, are we doing an advisory lesson today, or is today a workday? And they prefer the advisory lessons. And so we've covered all kinds of topics from this week's, which is about stress, to trust, to knowing the difference between different kinds of, like, helping out a friend in certain different situations. So it's been, I think, really, really, really good for team building. And I don't teach everyone in this class, so without advisory, I would never have got to know, literally, half the kids during my class. So overall, very positive experience.
Let her breathe, let her friend cool off. And that gives you a second to cool off as well. You get to kind of stop and say, okay, how do I want to respond to this? That's not going to escalate the situation. That's going to kind of bring it back down to me to have a good conversation. Any final thoughts for us on how to deal with peer situations?
I know that some of that text was probably hard to read in the back, but, and some of the students were a little challenging to hear with masks, but hopefully you did hear some of the themes that we were getting at that were trying to build relationships and connections and provide all of our students with a trusted adult that they know here in the building. Because sometimes in a sea of 630 kids, sometimes it can feel pretty lonely, even though there's lots of people around. So we really do try to build those connections with our students. And that concludes our component, so I will pass it back to you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. And thank you to the Montevideo family for being so welcoming and getting us ready for company tonight. Can we please give Montevideo a round of applause for all they're doing? I'm going to take a moment here to recognize, while we're still in recognitions, any students that are here tonight. So if you are a student, not just a government school student, and if you want to slip out, you can do that now, too. But if you are any student, please stand up so we can recognize you. Any students here tonight? There you go. Look at all of you all. Thank you all for being our guests tonight, and I hope you enjoy the meeting. We will now move into public comments, and I just want to take a moment to remind people you'll have three minutes to speak. We ask that you be respectful of others. While people are making their comments, please keep, please stay quiet. And then also, keep in mind that those students that just stood up, they are in the room. Our first speaker, Michael Stimple. And if, when you come up, if you could please state your name so that we can get it down for the record.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Stimple. I'm from the Broadway area. Let's talk about banning books. In legislation proposed across the nation, you have phrases like harmful to minors, obscene or obscene material describe, reading material that should be banned in school libraries. I know of a book that would meet all these criteria and that is likely in most homes in Rockingham County. That book is the best-selling book of all time, The Holy Bible. Let's start from the beginning. In Genesis 19, you have a father offering his daughters up to a group of strangers who want to engage in sexual violence with a guest. And at the end of the chapter, you have sexual acts among family members. Psalm, Chapter 137, verse 9, advocates for infanticide. First Samuel, Chapter 15, verse 3, and other passages like it, calls for genocide of a specific people group. First Samuel, Chapter 18, verse 25, talks of a hundred-four-skin dowry. Second Samuel, Chapter 11, talks about a voyeuristic king who, after finding out a woman he had intimate relations with is pregnant, arranges to have the woman's husband killed in battle. Judges 19, more sexual violence. This time, it resulted in the death of a man's concubine. You get the picture. I have heard that some are calling for Bibles to be put in every school. But what will that accomplish? Up until the landmark Supreme Court rulings in 1962, 1963, the Bible was read by teachers in public schools. Also during that time, open acts of racial prejudice and violence was acceptable and even legal in this state and states across the nation. Clearly, just having the Bible did not make people more righteous. The Bible itself calls on people to be not just hearers of the word, but doers of the word. So instead of banning books and putting Bibles in schools, let's love our neighbor as ourselves, and let's act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Burrell.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. My name's David Burrell. I'm the pastor of the Church of Salisburyburg in Elkton, Virginia, right at the very entrance of East Rockingham High School. Thanks once again. Thank you for the opportunity to stand for just a moment tonight and just to say a little bit of something about that very Bible. That very Bible and those passages that he give was really going down through a history lesson of people, is what that was doing. And then that God Himself condones those things. If you'll read the Bible and the commandments and what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said, He didn't condone those things. But what I want to talk about tonight is very simple. It's this right here. As we look at this, we just came through what everybody knows and says is a pandemic. And there were certain things and certain devices that were brought in to help us through the pandemic. A lot of it, we're still finding out because we're waiting on our knowledge to catch up with the science as we study those things. One thing that we had was a little mask. And we, everybody wore it. I wore one today when I went to the hospital to visit some of my folks that are in there. And these little devices are made, and I don't care how you feel about the efficacy of them either way, but they are made to be a filter for us and made for us to have a filter to keep some things out that we don't want inside of our body. Myself is a parent of a 16-year-old that goes to a Rockingham County school, and being the pastor of probably, I'd say, 100 and some children that go to Rockingham County schools, it is part of our duty and responsibility as parents, and in the jobs that I've been elected at as a pastor and you've been elected as as board members, is to be that filter. And we watch what comes in and what comes about for our children and what we let in and what we don't let in. We're supposed to be that filter. We look at the science behind it, that we can have, that we can look at it, over-sexualization of our children and what we expose them to at a young age when they're not mentally and mature enough, they're not developed enough to handle that information that they've got. We've got to look at the science behind that, too. But as we look at this, I've got one here, and I've got a whole list of books that has illicit sexual material in it, that I've got the list that I know is in Rockingham County Public Library. I'm not going to say what's in here and what I had to read through to get through it. I would not say that with a female in the room, much less a child. It is our responsibility to be the filter. It is our responsibility to protect our children from the things that is being put in. Now, God tells us in the Word of God that He gives us a space of grace sometimes. I thank God for grace. And I'm telling you, the school board, that we have a space of grace right now. And something more's coming down the line if we don't take advantage of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Hess.
I don't know how many of you have received my many emails, but here's the latest information that I'd like you to look at while I'm speaking. My purpose is to discuss the problem we're having at the Island Ford intersection where we had an accident in November. I have a proposal on the table to the board that says, do away with that intersection altogether. Have the kids bus to the Elkton schools, therefore they don't have to cross that intersection. It eliminates a lot of problems. It's no cost. You don't have to wait for VDOT to come up with a new program that's going to require changing the railroad crossings, et cetera, to accommodate the tractor trailers which now pass through the lane which the bus parks in. So you've got a conflict right there. If you go and have the schools bus the kids to Elkton, you don't have that controversy. You have no cost, no interference, no risk of anybody getting hurt or an accident with a school bus or a train. Simple change. The cost of having VDOT go in there and put signal lights in there is going to cost you millions of dollars, and it's totally unnecessary except for the public. That intersection needs to be changed, but it'll take 10 years till VDOT gets through all the analysis, all the studies, all the funding. Then the legislature will get into it, and they'll have to have a study. I know from following I-81 for seven years. I followed I-81 in Weers Cave seven years ago. We still have not put a shovel in the dirt because of all the policies and procedures that have to be followed. So that's my recommendation to the board. I think if you read the notes that I gave you there for that line, I think it's very clear. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them right now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Zach Nicholson.
Good evening. I'm Zach Nicholson. I'm here today to try and have a conversation about the inappropriateness of Sherman Alexie's novel, The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, a conversation that needs to happen with this book and perhaps others. The documents I handed this board, the documents I handed are excerpts from the book, a book that was too vulgar for little ears for last meeting. You guys will not put up the slides at Cross-HAD, so I took the liberty of resolving that issue by handing each of you a physical copy of questionable excerpts from the book. Read what is before you. As you can see, it's easy to tell why this book is one of the most banned books from school in this nation, why parents are furious and question, how is this language in this book acceptable for middle school and what possible educational benefits it serves? I have sent multiple emails to Shikele, Breeden, and Cross and have asked repeated times as to why you guys think this book is appropriate. We all know Mr. Cross's thoughts on this. I want yours. So far, I've gotten his repeated lectures on the IAC section of school policy and not an actual answer or conversation as to why this book is suitable for middle school. Mr. Breeden's not here tonight. I know we've had our differences in the past, but his silence on this matter is deafening. Parents, I emailed Mr. Breeden on March 11th in a thread that tagged Shikele as well. In this email, I sent excerpts from the book, some of the same ones before the board tonight. It's now in your hands. Shikele responded. Breeden did not. I was told that a presentation was to be done at next meeting regarding that section of policy. So March 23rd, I sent another email asking not for clarity on school policy, but just a simple conversation on why this book is appropriate. An email that tagged Cross, Breeden, and Shikele. Cross and Shikele responded. Breeden, still silent. So Shikele referred me again to policy and offered no insight as to why this book is appropriate. I offered solutions to perhaps a rating systems that could be used to warn students of inappropriate content beforehand versus the current policy, which addresses the problem usually after a student has read or been exposed to such a book. This section of policy I'm concerned with is how the committee who reviews the material was selected is tapped for that. This, to me, is nothing more than potentially stacking the deck against parents. What good does it do to file multiple complaints against a book to a committee that's going to keep rolling in favor to keep it? Your next option, then, is to appeal to the school board. Read the documents. I hand it to you again. Consider this my appeal. A book should not just get a free pass on language or content simply because it deals with equity or racism. It seems many prefer to stoop to the same levels of foulness as the subject versus, say, Martin Luther King or JFK's method, who tackle issues with logic and not cuss words or slang. You guys love throwing the quote around of, when you know better, do better. You guys know better. I'm still waiting on that do part. So I challenge you tonight to revisit the content in this book, give parents an answer tonight as to why this book is appropriate, and either ban the book or put in a rating system and notify parents. We don't allow this behavior in class under code GBAJFHA. With the evidence I presented tonight, we should be able to fast-track that, that this book's appropriateness or inappropriateness with a motion. So I ask you tonight who's going to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for tonight is John Bradshaw.
Good evening. I'm John Bradshaw. As most of you know, I'm a former teacher of Rockingham County. I resigned at the beginning of this year. So I say that to only say this, and you just have to believe what I'm telling you. Anything I say is not out of resentment. I'm in the will of God right now, and everything that's going on in my life is right where God wants me to be. So I'm not resentful in anything. I have, I speak tonight on behalf of teachers in the county. And as you can understand, it's hard for teachers to speak their actual opinion. It has nothing to do with you guys. It's just you're their boss, and it's hard for them to speak their actual opinion and tell you how they feel in the classroom. The truth, the truth is, there are a lot of teachers who, a lot of really good teachers, who are resigning early, who are quitting earlier than they would ever expect, who are, I shouldn't use the word quitting, but are resigning because of the conditions of the classroom. They feel unsafe in the classroom. I had notes. I'm not going to go to my notes. I'll just say it from my heart. They are resigning because they don't feel safe in their classrooms. There are kids that, and I mentioned this last time, I spoke in February 14th. I spoke about how there are kids with weapons in our classrooms, and they're getting two days suspended. Kids with weapons with intent to use them, and they're getting two days suspended. People need to know that this is going on in our school system. Now, we can pretend it's not happening, but our teachers are afraid to be in the classroom because they're sitting with, students are violent, and there's nothing being done about it. I was shocked that I didn't get any emails or any reach out to me after last time to say, hey, what do you know? What can we do to help? What's going on? Maybe you didn't know about it, but I can only assume that you know about these issues, but you're not doing anything about it. Why that is, I have no idea. But I would think that you would be more concerned about the safety of the teachers and the students in this county. The other thing I want to address that's causing a lot of stress for teachers, a lot of concern for teachers, is the fact that you can't get above, and it might seem ridiculous to some people, but you can't get below a 40 in any assignment in the classroom. Teachers are feeling very disrespected by that. They've got students who are just not turning in assignments. I had students myself who didn't turn in the majority of their assignments, but still passed my class. They had no basic knowledge of the content, but they're still passing the class because of this policy. This policy was put in place under the guise of it was done through, because of virtual learning, but it was put in place so that it could stay in place in the name of equity, and we all know that. But it's not passing people that need to be passed in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. The next item on our agenda is the highlights by board members, and I will start with Mr. Falk.
Glad to be here at Montevideo. It's always a pleasure to come here and meet with the people.
Thank you. Dr. McWhelkin?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I would like to say thank you to the folks at Montevideo. It sounds as if you had a few challenges getting, getting everything together. And when we walked in, you would never know. So thank you so much for all you've done to welcome us this evening. I would also like to point out that every year annually, the Virginia School Boards Association holds an art contest. And the schools, school divisions involved, there are about 12 to 15 of the school divisions involved. They all submit art in the elementary category, the middle school category, and the high school category. And in the past, Rockingham County has often had winners, and this year is no exception.